I'd like to convene the city council meeting for June 6, 2022. And I'd like everybody to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the roll, please.
Belzak.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Shauer.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
We have quorum. That takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. This has been on our agendas for the last several years in order to provide anybody in the audience with an opportunity to address the council on something that may not be agenda-related. Anybody in the audience like to come to the microphone and share anything they think the council needs to hear? If not, we'll move on. Approval of minutes, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the May 16, 2022 city council meeting. Moved by Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shauer. I know we didn't have a work session, so any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes, excuse me? Okay, if none, the roll.
Belzak.
Aye.
Shauer.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Abstain.
Sorry. Sullivan.
Abstain.
Vaughn.
Abstain. I wasn't here.
I wasn't here either, that's why.
You know, just for information for the council, if you're not at a meeting, doesn't mean you have to abstain because there are ways you could maybe view the meeting on YouTube. If you think the minutes are reflective, you are able to vote yes.
So I did watch the meeting and did review the minutes.
Yeah, if you feel they're accurate. I think as a practice, the city council has abstained. It's usually one person, it doesn't matter. But, and maybe if you're not at a meeting, didn't watch it, you feel more comfortable. But if you think, if you feel the minutes are reflective, you can approve those.
Okay.
Can we do the roll call again?
Go ahead and do that again.
Sure. Alderman Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Shauer.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
We've learned something every day.
That takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the, all the people have communications they'd like to share? Mary.
Thank you, Mayor. I know there's been ongoing communication between city hall staff and the mayor and myself with Illinois Department of Transportation as it relates to North Frontage Road, most especially the curve along the St. Tree Shrine and the Carmelite area as it leads to Cass Avenue. So I just wanted to point out that, for those who haven't noticed, there has been new signs placed alerting people of the curve going both ways and a speed limit, hoping that might make somewhat of an impact. We're still forging ahead, voicing our hope for some type of additional barrier to be put in. But I do see that as being some type of subtle progress. And thank staff and the mayor for their ongoing diligence with that. Secondly, I did receive a communication from one of my residents in Ward 5, Andrew Kelly, relating to the new vape shop that was opened up in Brookhaven Plaza. He was questioning the legitimacy of it. And I did work with city staff and they helped me respond with, because he was questioning why it didn't go in front of municipal services or planning and zoning because it is approved use for that space. And then he did send along some other materials about, you know, changing, potentially changing code to prohibit establishments like that. And I've passed it on to city staff to take under advisement.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Okay, that takes us to receiving of, the mayor's report. I've got a couple items. I wanted to thank Mary Anderson of Lay School and her students who once again sent me letters inquiring as to my role of mayor of the city of Darien. I received letters from 27 students, each asking maybe five to 10 questions, like what's your favorite color? What's the most powerful thing you do as mayor? And I try to answer every question to every student. Mary said that when she received them back, that she actually read each student, she read my response to each of the kids. And just the other day, I received, I received these beautiful letters of thanks from all these kids. And it's really kind of neat. This is kind of the second year we've done something like that. And I wanted to thank Mary for awakening their minds to how government works. I think they were like second or third grade. They really answered questions too, so I appreciate it. Today, I had an opportunity to go to Morton Arboretum. Students from Pleasant Dale School in Burr Ridge and Maple Brook and Naperville during their study of geology worked to select a state rock that speaks to the history of the state of Illinois. The rock selected is dolostone, which is a sedimentary rock composed of dolomite and is similar to limestone. And it is a stone that underlies most of the state of Illinois. The students did extensive research on this issue and worked with two state legislators to get a bill passed designating dolostone as Illinois's official state rock. So today, Governor Pritzker came to Morton Arboretum to sign the bill making this final designation. Students and their teachers from both schools spoke to their work. Representative Janet Yang Roar and Senator Laura Elman for their assistance in following these proceedings. Wheaton Mayor Phil Sees and I had a private meeting with the governor regarding LGDF, which we will not let go away in other topics of concern to DuPage mayors and managers. One of the things I wanted to emphasize is these were young children who had an opportunity to explore something, research it, talk to, they talked to actual geologists, they worked with state legislators, they went down to Springfield, they acted as expert witnesses, and they got a view of what the legislative process is all about. So these kids, it may sound trite, you know, that they did a state rock, but they saw how the legislative system worked. And they all had their picture taken with the governor. And I know people who get excited to have their picture taken with the mayor. Can you imagine a third or fourth grader getting their picture taken with the governor of the state of Illinois? It was a big deal to these kids. And so I really, I commend them and their teachers on their work. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, for those of you who don't know by now, Darien is going to have a concert series. And these posters and flyers are going to go out. We have three concerts, one did last Thursday in June, one the last Thursday in July, and one the last Thursday in August. And you will be seeing, you'll see, you've seen these on Facebook. You're going to be seeing them in the direct connect. And you're going to be seeing them in stores and at the library and other places where we can hand them out. So start saving your Thursdays at the end of the month for our concert series. And that's my mayor's report. That takes us to the city clerk's report.
The city clerk tempo, temporary city clerk has no report.
Takes us to the-
Thanks for bearing with me.
Takes us to the city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple items. If the city council can also take that brochure for the concerts and put it out, maybe you have contact lists in your, of your constituents or some kind of email list, it'd be great to put that out. Again, this is, this is new for us and we don't know how many people will show up. And I don't think we'll get thousands, which I don't know that anybody wants that. It's really geared for, you know, the smaller venue, maybe the community interest. So we do hope residents would enjoy that, appreciate it. And we hope the weather cooperates, which is always a big deal for these concert series. Second, as the city council makes its way through the agenda, they will come to consent agenda item A, which is a variation. And that's from Home Run In. And just a quick comment, it's always very nice to see our businesses reinvest in their property, in their building, in their business. It's a good indication that they're having success and that businesses in Darien are successful. So that is really nice to see. Years ago, before most of you were on the council, the city worked with Woodridge because the corporate headquarters for Home Run In is in, is in Woodridge. And there was an economic incentive that Woodridge was working on with the state, but they needed some assistance from, non-financial assistance from a municipality. And we were right there with Woodridge, working with, you know, the business in Home Run In. So again, it's just a nice thing to see and glad everything's going well for them.
Thank you, Brian. Department head, information and questions for the police department. For Chief Thomas, chief, anything?
I don't, I have a couple of comments from the Alderman and yourself that I received. So I'm not sure when you want to attack that issue.
I was going to ask you to address that. We had, we had concern from Alderman Gustafson. Following the Uvalde, Texas tragedy, Alderman Gustafson questioned how prepared we are and how prepared our schools might be to deal with a similar situation. So Greg, maybe as precisely as you can answer that.
Yes. I think there's a lot of information, or a lot of things on people's mind regarding mass shootings at Uvalde. It was not the only one that has happened in the last couple of weeks. I think that the question I was asked was, what can we respect from the police and the other first responders? And I'll answer that. I think some other questions that are on people's minds is, what should they do if they were caught in an active assailant situation? Maybe that's for another time. Same as how to prepare for an active assailant in your place of work, place of worship, place of school, whatever. And probably one of the most important ones is, how can we prevent them from happening in the first place? And I know there's a lot of conversation going around on that topic. And I have a lot to say about that, but we won't tonight. But we will discuss the issue at hand about, that I was asked about and how the police and the fire are going to respond to those incidents. So obviously, it's probably going to start in the 911 center. Currently, 911 calls go to DUCOM. I'm guessing that probably most people don't understand how a 911 center works. There's basically three functions within a 911 center. The call taker, the police dispatch, and fire dispatch. And I'll explain their duties in a second. But the thing I'm going to hammer hard and often is remember location. The police, fire, EMS, nobody can help if we do not know where you're at. So a lot of people want to go into a long narrative about what's going on, which is important, but the most important thing is to get the help there. And that's through location. So make sure that location's first. The call taker's going to ask you almost when they answer the phone is where's your emergency or where's the situation? So make sure that that comes first. I told you that there was three main functions within the 911 center, call taker, police dispatch, fire dispatch. As soon as you give that address and what that situation is, the call taker's going to enter that information and it enters very fast. And then they're going to hit a return key. And that information on the call taker's screen is going to appear on the police dispatch screen and the fire dispatch screen. So that dispatcher is going to give that, the police response immediately. The fire and EMS is going to give that response immediately. So even though you're still on the phone and talking to somebody and you want the police there, you want the EMS there, it's on its way. That call taker is not a part of that other portion. Now, smaller agencies, I have a niece that works down in Kentucky and she is it. You know, so she is the call taker, the police dispatch, fire dispatch. But here, we have the luxury of having a number of personnel within the 911 center. And those duties are given up, are given out to each different positions. And those positions will make that happen. So understand that when you call the, or call 911, they're going to get the location and they're going to dispatch that car, or cars, multiple cars, but most likely, immediately. And then they're going to get a bunch of other information. And that's going to be frustrating because they're going to want to know the number of assailants, physical description, number and types of weapons, number of potential victims, severity of injuries, location of the victim, on and on. There's going to, there's a whole protocol that they're going to go down and ask those questions. And you also have to remember that they're probably getting hundreds. And the situation down in Uvalde, I bet there was numerous, numerous, numerous calls into that 911 center that they're going to have to triage. And so they're probably not going to be as polite as you think they should be. They're going to be very matter-of-fact and get that information quickly. They don't know which one of those 50 calls in queue, maybe the sixth one down has the information about what the assailant looks like. And this eighth one down has the information about what the type of weapon that's being used. And the 12th one down has the location of where the victims are. So they have to triage a lot of information all at the same time. So that information's already flowing out to those officers and they're going to get that information out very quickly. At the same time that that information's all going on and that first initial dispatch is given out, the police officer, probably the supervisor, is going to call that he has incident command, meaning that he has, actually, he's probably going to call out unified command, which means he has control over everything. He's got control over police, fire, EMS. He is the boss on that scene for all things relative to that scene. And he's going to start directing all the resources wherever they need to be. And the first officers are getting there. In general terms, the police actions, police mindset, there's three things to keep in mind. One is keep the scene from getting worse, treat the injured, and restore order. So I'll give you a quick example in motor vehicle crashes. So you might get dispatched to a minor traffic crash. So keeping the scene from getting worse, you're going to make a quick non-emergency response. You're going to park with the lights so you can block some traffic. Treat the injured might be as simple as asking the drivers if they're hurt. And restoring order, just have them move the cars to the side of the road into a parking lot. You could have a major traffic crash where you're going to drive lights and sirens to the scene. You may call additional cars to block other directions of travel. Treat the injured might be grabbing your first aid kit, calling, assisting the paramedics, calling for extrication, all kinds of different things. And then restore order might be calling for a tow truck, reconstructionists and those type of things to finish up that scene. Obviously, it just gets bigger and bigger depending on fatalities, fire, hazmat situations and those type of things. But generally, keep those three things in mind. So in the discussion we're having now is keep the scene from getting worse. So we're going to respond and we're going to make immediate entry with the first officer, first couple of officers that are on the scene and go two by two for most part. You'll see a lot of times when they have videotape, that videotape comes later. And you'll see four officers moving in maybe a T formation, a diamond formation, those type of things. But for the most part, we're going to enter with the first couple of officers on the scene. You know, it sounds terrible, and it is, but police are not going to help you if you are injured. The assailant can kill and harm faster than we can treat and extricate. So as ugly as it is, the officer's going to move on and move towards that threat and then treat the injured. You might come in three different ways. We use a program called Rescue Task Force. We have trained officers in life-saving skills. We have trained paramedics in tactics. And we have some good paramedics that help us out. And we may even have officers assigned to escort paramedics in and out of the building in order to treat and evacuate the area. When we get to restoring order, we're talking about clearing the building. So we're going to go in and immediately move towards the offender. But we have to go back and find all the victims where they might be hiding, in cabinets, cupboards, under desks, in closets and the like. And obviously, we have to find all the offenders and do those things. Evidence collection, evidence identification, conduct the investigation. So that's generally, again, very specifically. When you look at national response times, you're talking about three to six minutes, which is a lifetime if you're in one of those situations. So we talked about the initial cars getting there. Those are called contact teams. Nationally, about 57% of the time, the police will arrive during a shooting situation and have to handle that situation. First offenders on the scene, or first officers on the scene, like I said, will not stop to help the injured, they're going to move on. There are schools in other places. Hinsdale Health, Hinsdale South High School has a SRO in security in the building. And then, like I said, it's going to be patrol officers first and special units to follow. Prior to Columbine, back in 1999, it was get to the scene quickly, block all exits and wait for the SWAT team. That has gone to the wayside since, I think it was April of 1999. Following the initial police entries, you can expect rescue teams to follow those initial officers. Police are not going to be polite. They're going to tell you what they need you to do. Either flee the area, stop, do whatever. Do not be threatening. Keep your hands visible at all times. Keep your hands empty, bags, jackets, those type of things. Avoid quick movements. So that's how police are going to respond. It's going to be easy for me to say remain calm. It's going to be very difficult to do that in that situation. The primary function of the officers, from 1995 to 2003, was as a training officer. We taught a thing that we called ICE, isolate, contain, and eliminate. So we're going to do our best to keep that assailant away from any other people. We're going to contain that person to the smallest geographic area as possible. Then we're going to eliminate the threat, however that might look like. It might be a negotiated agreement, might be an assault, might be a sniper, whatever it might take to end that situation. Secondary, immediately following or during the ICE function is tending to the injured and try to get those individuals immediately transported to a hospital or to care. Most likely, they're going to be taken out and taken to a field hospital that was set up and get going. If you're ambulatory, you're going to walk yourself out and get all the injured to a designated area. There was a few questions that was given to me and I'll answer those and then I answer any other questions that you may have. One of the questions is what do your officers go through in respect to shooter at school? What type of training? So we do tabletop exercises. We do full scenario tactical training each year. We've been in Hinsdale House, Hinsdale South High School, Our Lady of Peace. Some other buildings have been donated to us for use. And so we go through full scenario training. Obviously firearms training, defensive tactics training, use of force training, breaching techniques, how to get into buildings, combat medic training, and Rescue Task Force training, to name a few. Another question was, are school officials involved in the training? And that's a yes. We're mandated to do one onsite drill each year at each school. And we do those annually. Depending on how elaborate or detailed training differs. Sometimes it might be tabletop and other times it might be the full-blown training. The question was, I assume the officers, county and state, would respond to this active assailant call? Yes and no. There is a mutual aid agreement that most officers would come from surrounding agencies versus the state police. It's a situation that has to be done quickly. And the program's called ELEUS, Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System. Each ELEUS level is five officers. An example in Aurora, when they had their shooting, they called ELEUS 30, which means 150 officers were requested in that situation. The logical follow-up question is, how do you coordinate all those resources? And that's the unified command's job to do that. And training, we, for the most part, all the officers are trained similarly. We're in a good location because we all have common radio channels. One of the biggest things that is problematic during any kind of situation is communications, but we have great communications because we have good radio communications. Like I said, we have common tactics so that people know that are responding to the scene know how to respond to the scene and what we're going to do when we might call any number of tactics. Bounding overwatch, slice of pie, clearing rooms, all those different types of things. People don't understand what that means when you're working together. So we do train together at times, depending on the nature and scale of the call or training. The question is, if your officers, county and state, all arrived at the school call, who leads that combined response? The local jurisdiction has control. Typically, that would be the first officer on the scene, who would relinquish incident command to the supervisor, who in turn would relinquish incident command, unified command, to the deputy chief or myself, and we would run that entire operation. The question was, are your officers trained to go immediately into the school? And that is correct. Like I said, from 95 to 2003, I did the training. In 1999, immediately following Columbine, I think it was April, by May, we were up and running and teaching a whole different procedure and mindset. And Darien, one of the first things I looked at when I got here is how they responded, and they responded in the same, for the most part, using the same policy, same procedures, and the same training. So any questions other further, I'll definitely do my best to answer those.
Thank you for answering all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Let's hope we don't have to deal with one of those situations.
Mr. Gronk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city council and our viewing residents at home. This is some very important information we have coming up for our residents at home. But prior to that, in respect to your comments about dolomite and the state rock, dolomite is also used in asphalt. So it's one of the primary stones within leveling binder, what they refer to as. So just some additional information. Anyway, my purpose here is for the meter kickoff program this evening. We're starting the meter program. And the meter program includes approximately 9,000 meters or all of Darien that the city will be replacing. The technology is referred to as automated meter reading. It's similar to NIKOR as well as COMED, electronic. One of the major benefits of this is accurate readings and the opportunity to define leaks. For example, a toilet leak, which are very, very consuming as water goes. Obviously, the more water you use, the more you pay. But this is one of the main features, which will be able to have alarms. And those alarms could be set by DuPage County, who was our partner in billing. And when these alarms would come in, they would notify us. Also, we're going to also have opportunities to have a computer, I'll call it a computer for some database, to be able to trigger these alarms as well. The program itself involves DuPage County. We've partnered up with DuPage County on this program. And that includes the meter purchasing through a separate contracts and as well as the operation of how these meters are going to be removed and replaced. It will be an outside company and this- It will be an outside company, and this outside company is vetted. So, prior to me, to me be up here and keep on speaking, I'd like to show a short video for our meter kickoff program. And this video will be running throughout the next several months, probably six months for sure. So, be patient with me one moment, because I'm not an AV guy. It's about a three-hour movie, so.
It's Top Gun, I hope.
It's Top Gun.
There we go, Tom Cruise. This is our new Tom Cruise here. So, keep that in mind.
The city of Darien has partnered with DuPage County and is starting the program to change our residential water meters. The first steps will be notify each resident of the meter exchange program. You will receive a letter to schedule your appointment for your meter. The main purpose for this water meter change-out program is to have accurate meters because as the meters age, they become less accurate. More accurate readings are important for more precise bill. The city plumber has been hired by the city and county for the installations. They will need entry to your home in order to access the water meters. Therefore, if you have any instructions near the meter, these will have been prior to your appointment. On the day of your appointment, a Calumet City plumber will show up in a CCP company service vehicle and uniform. They will have a DuPage County and CCP ID card for safety. It will take approximately fifteen to thirty minutes for the plumber to change out the meter in each resident's home. The city of Darien has roughly ninety thousand meters that will be changed out via the meter exchange program. The city appreciates your preparation and participation.
Not as exciting as Top Gun, but anyway, more information's gonna be coming out with these postcards. The postcards, people will start receiving them within a couple of weeks. The postcards will be coming from Calumet City, actually Emmy Simpson, who is the database manager for the plumbing company, Calumet City. All the information on there will be how to schedule. Any opportunities will be telephone and/or online. The way it's gonna be done is, the way the meter routes work from DuPage County is how the routes are gonna be established. So, maybe the western quadrant first. The program itself will take approximately a year to complete. So, while you're getting these postcards, it doesn't mean that within the next two months or even six months, that your meter's gonna be up for replacement. It's a rolling program. So, we need all the cooperation that we can get from residents to help make this program successful. For any additional information, you can call Regina. She's my assistant, six-three-oh-three-five-three-eight-one-zero-five. She's gonna love me on that phone number there. And we also have additional information on the website, which will include this video as well as further FAQs in regards to, you know, what happens to the meters, or how they work, and so on and so forth. So, we encourage residents to please take a look at the website for the additional information. And any other questions, please feel free to give us a call. Be more than happy to answer any specific questions.
Anything?
Dan, will this involve replacing the meters of the unincorporated areas that are on the Darien system as well?
Actually, yes. There's a total of eleven, approximately eleven thousand five hundred meters in total. Of those nine thousand are the cities, and twenty-five hundred are the unincorporated areas. There are water customers, while they're not our residents' water customers, yes.
We had talked about this before. Is there a way of getting, though, is a phone app so people can monitor their water usage? For example, if I'm out of town and I wanna make sure that the house is secure, there's no water leaks, I can go on the phone app and check?
The answer is yes. That app is a separate app.
Okay.
And that app has not been programmed yet, number one.
Okay.
Nor have we paid a subscription for it.
Okay.
There will be a subscription cost for that application. Our goal was to see how many residents would be interested in that. And then, taking that feedback and providing a cost to it, because it's either, it's one or all. So, it is not, you know, again, so we're trying to, we're gonna probably reach out to NICOR and COMED for some additional feedback and respect to that to see how many hits, if you wanna say, that people are...
Do you have any idea how much that would cost?
I wanna say it was close to a thousand dollars a year.
For everybody?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
How much, Dan?
A thousand, approximately a thousand.
I think that'd be, I think people would love that app. I know some people that had a flooding issue when they were out of town and the refrigerator line broke.
See, and at the same time, to your point, we're gonna have alarms set up with residents that more, if more than ten percent, you know, if you have a period of more than ten percent or whatever the number is, then alarm will go off and the contact information, and that's something that's so important, is that residents need to provide us with the contact information. And it's more owner, property owner information, not tenant information. Because obviously, when tenants come and go, the information gets lost.
You may wanna set your usage different when you're out of town versus when, you know, you're home.
Correct, correct.
That kinda thing, so.
The lower, the lower the usage is fine. It's the above the norm that there's always a problem.
But the trouble is, your norm could be when you're home, and which could be very high when you're out of town. So, you would want, you know what I mean?
I understand. There's different parameters of how you could set it. And I don't have all the information as far as what you could set it to.
I think it would be a very popular app for people to have.
No, it's already been tracked on a list for opportunities.
Okay.
Dan, I'm sorry. Eric's question made me think, do you recommend that when people are out of town, maybe vacation for a week, that they actually shut their water off in the house? I mean, going one step further, that's probably a good thing to do.
Correct, shut the water off. And we try to reiterate that every winter. At the same time, they can't turn the heat off. The heat should be maintained at fifty degrees per se. You know, this way, that water, the water gets to a temperature of approximately thirty-four degrees in some cases. So, with no heat in the house, it could freeze rather quickly. And it doesn't take much for the copper pipes to burst or the meter to burst. So, and then we all know what happens after that.
And just a couple more things. Anybody following the budgets, they looked and they have seen this project in our budget for a couple of years. That was COVID. Why we're starting now was because of COVID. We weren't going to people's houses, so just as a tidbit, we're not behind. That's, we're probably on a really good schedule now, given that.
Correct, that was the main goal, and we looked for opportunities, you know, with the vendors. And again, from the past, this program itself, there's been a lot of vetting, a lot of research, basically almost three years that we were in progress of making this happen, including, you know, the joint co-op with DuPage County as well as a couple of other municipalities that are also in the program. So, really, it was a beneficial program. I wish we could've gotten more municipalities. Unfortunately, we couldn't.
Actually, this was a great example of your work at developing an intra-governmental program. And my only wish was, you would've got more recognition for it because I know it's involved a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
So, many thanks to you for all your work on this.
How's it gonna get communicated now to residents?
Within the next couple of weeks, postcards will be going out. On those postcards will be two pieces of information. The first one will be about the meter program itself.
Okay.
And then, the gist is basically what the video has just encapsulated.
It's gonna indicate it's gonna be this Calumet City plumbing, right? Because I know people right now are really fearful of people coming to their door and looking to get access into their home.
That's true. As information, all Calumet City plumbers have been vetted. What does vetted mean? Background checks, and I'm sorry, criminal, what are the two basic, criminal and background checks through DuPage County. DuPage County has a system of a third-party vendor that basically does all this research. DuPage County has vetted them. We're not gonna vet them separately, just there's no reason to have an additional expense first and foremost.
So, they'll be told to look for this ID card?
They'll have the ID cards.
And they should be driving a Calumet City truck?
Correct, they'll be all uniformed.
Okay.
The vehicles themselves will be Calumet City plumbing vehicles. The label will be on there, just as you saw in the video, and so...
Plus, you're gonna get a lot of nine-one-one calls. People showing up, you know, not knowing who they are.
And again, we encourage people to call nine-one-one because they're gonna be out there. They're gonna be, they're gonna have all the equipment, the proper identification. And a lot of these questions are gonna be on the website under the FAQs as well.
Dan, in addition, we're obviously hitting it very hard in direct connect and, you know, getting all that information out, probably almost weekly till you get started, and then some.
Just go on the cable channel?
Yes.
Through the video?
Yes, this is really the first presentation, and we're referring to it as the meter kickoff program.
Will people know at all when their area's gonna be done? So, they'll know what, like, Fire Medial Village is gonna be done July, in middle of July or that type of thing?
Don't have the exact routes yet. My goal is, once we've determined the routes, because they're gonna be co-mingling with several different aldermen, if you wanna say, or overlapping. Once we have the identification, my goal is to reach out to, whether it's yourself, Alderman Sullivan, and say, hey, this is your area for targeting now. So, we'll keep everybody abreast. We'll also have, provide a, I'm not sure if it's gonna be monthly, just a monthly report on how the program's going and how many meters have been changed out. This is a big program.
I know you have, like, the fire hydrant flushing signs that are up.
Correct.
Would it make sense to put those kinda signs up, that water meter replacement that's gonna happen?
In my opinion, I would not, I don't wanna promote something that gives an opportunity to somebody else. And Greg, maybe you could chime in on that, too. You know, I just couldn't see putting up those types of...
I think, based on what Dan's talking about, you know, that people are going to see somebody new come into their place. And we've been hammering, you know, scams for a long period of time. And hopefully, they do stop them and check their ID and look out the window and make sure that that placard's on the car and those type of things. And if not, call nine-one-one.
Yeah, so promoting additional signs, I would not encourage that.
Thank you.
And on this postcard key, we're also gonna be, we have to provide the consumer confidence report. It'll be on that postcard, too. So, all the information, it's a real, real important piece of information that we have coming out. And again, look out for it for within the next two weeks. All the residents will be receiving it.
And Dan, that's at the printers now, but we could send it out to the council tomorrow even so they can see what is coming in case they had any questions.
Correct, yes.
The only thing, Dan, if you mentioned it, I'm sorry, but this is a required. If you're on our water system, the meter change-out to the AMR is required.
It is required if there is anyone that wants an opt-out for whatever reason. And I shouldn't say whatever reasons. Basically, the reasoning would be due to the AMR technology, privacy, so on and so forth. We've checked all that. We've looked into all that. There's been no reports of anything that could be negative. Again, that's also on the FAQ. But if people wanna opt-outs, they will be, we'll still have to replace the meter. We will just not have automated meter reading on that particular account, and there will be a charge for it. There'll be an additional charge, meaning that a water meter reader has to come out and physically get that reading.
Anything else for Dan?
If, for people who've already had their mechanical meters replaced in the last five to ten years, I think we stopped, I don't know when we started doing it, but are they gonna be part of this as well? Or are they already, are the meters that they have that we've replaced in the last few years gonna be comparable with what we're doing?
They'll be part of the program, but they'll be limited. And I didn't want them, to answer your specific question, we've decided that the cutoff date will be twenty sixteen. There may have been residents that received newer meters prior to twenty sixteen, and it's really just a handful. Since twenty sixteen, we've been planning for the technology with the meter itself. The meter itself is referred to in iPearl and has the ability to incorporate the AMR technology. So, residents that have had their meters replaced and after twenty sixteen, there's approximately probably a thousand of them out there, those meters, we do not have to get into the house. We will basically be putting a new remote on the outside that has the opportunity to read that meter and back through the actual system.
We did a few, we did about a thousand about two or three years ago, didn't we, Dan?
Over the, since twenty sixteen, it's probably about, well, at least eleven hundred.
Because I was one of those
Yes.
people who got one of these meters. But what you're saying is, they'll just go outside my house and put the device that's gonna be able to read the meter?
Correct.
They won't become an, okay.
Right, when you're gonna call and make that appointments, they're gonna know which type of meter you have, and they're gonna say, oh, you know what? We don't have to get into your home. We just need to be outside. We'll do it, whatever the date is. So, really, you don't even have to be there because all the locations, all the remotes are gonna be recorded in a database where they're exactly located at.
My concern always is senior citizens who don't have, you know, they're gonna get a postcard, but they don't often have the technology or follow. You know, when we did the change-out between Waste Management and LRS, we really made a concentrated effort on senior citizens. And I think we did a good job. We got about twelve hundred of them that actually came into City Hall and applied. Do we have any program, anything we could do to assist senior citizens, who, by the way, probably would be more doubtful about people coming into their house?
There's a couple of things. There's a redundancy program on the notifications. So, first time you get a postcard, second time you get a letter, third time you're gonna get another letter, fourth time you're gonna get your, you know, water terminated. With that said, you know, when seniors call us and they have that fear, we'll see what opportunities there are for our employees, either to change the meter or to assist them with anything they may need. So, yeah, we're very sensitive to that. That's why we have two portals of communication for setting up appointments via telephone and/or the internet.
Dan, you said they would get letters. I think you mean door hangers or...
Letters.
Actual letters. And will there be no door hangers for this program?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Anything else for Dan? Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Tell Christopher he did a nice job.
He's a movie star now.
All right. That takes us to the treasures report. We have two warrants tonight. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-seven in the amount of forty-seven thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-one cents from the listed funds.
Motion to approve. Alderman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments? I know we didn't have a chance to look at this in a work session tonight. Okay, you've numbered the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Shauer.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Marquez.
Warrant's been approved. We have a second one, Mike?
Okay, warrant number twenty-two, twenty-three oh-three, requesting council's approval of eight-hundred-ninety-nine thousand two-hundred-fifty dollars and thirty-five cents from the listed funds, as well as payroll for the periods ended May nineteenth of twenty-twenty-two and June second of twenty-twenty-two, in the amount of five-hundred-thirty-one thousand six-hundred-eighty-four dollars and seventy-four cents, for a total to be approved of one million four-hundred-thirty thousand nine-hundred-thirty-five dollars and nine cents.
Motion to approve. Alderman Shauer, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Again, any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Shauer.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
The warrant's been approved, Mike. I know we didn't have a work session again. Do you have anything you wanted to?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. Standing committee reports. Any, all the men have any reports for the council? Alderman Belzak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next municipal services committee meeting will be on Monday, June twenty-seven, at six PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Sullivan?
The economic development meeting that should've been last week was rescheduled to Thursday, June twenty-third. And administrative finance committee was canceled tonight due to lack of agenda items. And the next one will be in July, I presume, but I'm not sure. Are we having a council meeting the first week in July?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Takes us to questions and comments, agenda-related. Anyone on the council or in the audience have any questions regarding our agenda? If not, we move on to old business. There are being none, we move to the consent agenda. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance approving a variation from the Darien zoning ordinance, PCC 2022-01, which is for 7521 Lamont Road. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of one new C Core C200 leak correlator from Eden Brothers LLC in an amount not to exceed $11,238. And item C, consideration of a motion to approve the expenditure of budgeted funds to purchase ammunition from Keesler's Police Supply in an amount of $18,753.60. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak, and the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
The consent agenda's approved. We move to new business. There are being none. We move to questions and comments of a general nature. Anybody have anything for the council, or does anybody in the audience have anything for the council? If not, ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Shower. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.